We can always use Harabedian's flag.
I didn't interrupt, ladies and gentlemen, we are not live.
Okay, we're live, okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Sierra Madre City Council meeting for May twenty-six, two thousand twenty. And with that, can we have a roll call?
Mayor John Caposha.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Esmonday.
Present.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a corpsman may conduct city business.
Okay, our pledge of allegiance and inspiration will be done by Councilmember Harabedian today. So again, everybody mute so that we can only hear John cite the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. For those who can stand and wish, stand and will. If there is a flag, I put a flag behind me so that we all can see one, and I know that James, I think, had one up earlier, but repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And my inspiration will be just, you know, really short and sweet, just celebrated Memorial Day. And it's always one of those holidays for me, which is a, it's an eternal battle. You know, it's a celebration and we're having fun with family and friends. And this one was a bit more muted than others, but I think it's always important, and it's always one of my favorite holidays, just to remember all the men and women who laid down their lives for us so that we can really live in the greatest country in the world, and just to remember their families during this time, especially those who lost family members too young and who may have lost a child, a brother, a sister, a grandchild. And for those who have passed fighting and serving this country. And, you know, dedicating this meeting as we dedicate, you know, everything we do to them. So really, the inspiration is just thinking about all of our brothers and sisters who have served this country and paid the highest cost in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harabedian. Okay, approval of the meeting agenda. Any proposed changes to the agenda? I would like to. I want to pull item E on the consent calendar for discussion. That's recommendation to approve the Sierra Vista parking lot improvement.
It's fine with me. I'll move for approval with that change.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, can you call for the vote?
I apologize. Mayor John Caposha.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Esmonday.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian. The motion to approve the agenda as amended was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Next is approval of the meeting minutes. Any suggested changes to the minutes?
It could be good approved.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk.
Mayor John Caposha.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Esmonday.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Aye.
The motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of May twelfth, two thousand twenty, as presented, was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, Mayor and City Council, anybody with anything to report?
I have no report, Mayor. No report from me either.
I as well, no report.
Okay, and I don't have one either, so. Okay, at this time, we'll take public comment. Or anything that's not on the agenda, do we have anybody who has called in on the comment line?
Mayor, this is Laura Aguilar. Before we go to the public, to any potential verbal public comment, I do want to mention that there was one email received from Robert Nydam, or item is not on the agenda. His comments were received by email yesterday and forwarded to the city council for their review. Mr. Nydam was informed that the email will be filed and under public record.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do have somebody on the line?
We have two callers on the line, Mayor.
Okay, and again, we can't, it's because there's a delay, just to notify those that are waiting on the, on the line. One of our staff will tell you that you're live, and then that's your time to go. But I'm not going to respond to anything directly to what you say because there's a tape or a delay and it gets a little bit, you know, awkward. So I'll just thank you in advance for your comments right now, but I won't be thanking you after you make the comments. And if you have a question, if you ask a question of something, we will consider giving an answer after everybody has spoken. So with that, let's go ahead.
Good afternoon. Please provide your name and city of residence if you are watching this meeting on live TV.
Yes, my name is Andrea Bertolini.
Okay, go ahead.
Andrea Bertolini.
Go ahead, you may proceed with your comment.
Uh, no, I'm just listening to the meeting tonight, is that possible?
The meeting, you gotta watch the meeting on our city website, we do have a live video.
Oh, okay.
Alrighty.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Good afternoon, please provide your name and city of residence. If you're watching this meeting live, please mute your TV to avoid feedback. You will have up to three minutes to provide your comment. You are live and may proceed. Caller? Caller, you are live for public comment.
This is Colby Conacek, manager of finance and budget.
Go ahead, you may provide your comment. Colby, do you have a public comment?
No.
Okay. All right, so if there's no others, we'll close public comment. I'm just wondering for the first caller, did, does she know where to view the city's website? So maybe I'll just say it, if you go to the city website and click on how do I, right at the bottom, that'll take you to, you know, one of the options is to watch the council meeting. So I hope you're able to do that, appreciate that you were listening in, but you know, hopefully you can get to the webs, to the website and watch the video live, so. But thanks for calling in. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to, we don't have any any presentations or anything, so next on the agenda is the consent calendar. So, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, before I read them, I just want to clarify, one E was taken off, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, thank you. Okay, we have four items on consent this evening, the first one, A is adoption of resolution twenty dash thirty-one of the city council of the city of Sierra Madre approving certain demands. Item B, adoption of resolution twenty dash twenty-nine, adopting fiscal year nineteen through twenty budget adjustments and appropriating the amounts projected. Item C, consideration of approval of increases for open purchase orders where the purchase order plus the increase exceeds forty-five thousand for fiscal year two thousand nineteen to twenty. And the last one, D, recommendation of library project funding, and that concludes the consent items.
Okay, are there any questions for staff on these consent items?
I have a quick question, Mayor. I don't know if librarian Christine is on the line, but just in general, how the RFID system works, if someone can explain that.
Mayor Pro Tem, the RFID system puts electronic tags on all the books in our collection and allows for contactless checkout. It allows us to provide more space in the library, and it also will allow us to expand our hours when we don't have to have staff present, or we have minimal staff present. It allows people to go into the library and self-checkout books connected to their account without having to interact with people face to face.
Great, thanks.
Just muted, any other questions? Okay, I forgot to say that we take public comment at the same time as general public comment for items not on the agenda. But since I forgot to do that, do we have anybody that's on the line that wishes to comment on any item on the consent calendar?
There's no one currently online, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, with that, we have a motion for approval of the items on the consent calendar with the exception of item E.
Move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item E.
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, if you can call for the vote.
Mayor John Caposha.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Esmonday.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Aye.
The motion to approve consent items one through D and not item one E as presented was passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's talk about item E now, and is it Mr. Semino or city manager, do you want to just give a quick overview of what this is, and then I'll say why I wanted it pulled?
Mayor, I think we'll let Director Semino address it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The reconfiguration or the project there at Sierra Vista Park, right now, we find ourselves to having an opportunity to fulfill this project at the park because of the use of the park is down currently. The project will consist of adding nineteen additional parking spots and three handicap, or four ADA spaces. We're, we're talking about in increasing the, the entrance, the width of the entrance on the west side. And then adding parking on fifteen feet of the green space leading up that driveway towards the tennis courts. And then in the parking lot, as you turn east towards the pool and the YMCA, we're going to be adding a walkway path on the north side of the parking lot from those ADA spots there to lead to the pool. Currently, there really isn't a ADA pathway that leads to the pool. And then we're going to have, we're increasing three more parking spots there in front of the pool where currently there's a nonusable driveway leading to the pool to nowhere, I guess it was used as ADA, but it's not compliant now. And then continuing ourselves down that parking lot, we're going to change the configuration on the east side, so when you pull into the west side and you don't have any parking stalls, you can just continue down that parking lot now and be able to park facing east and then exit at the far end. So we'll have two entrances, it will be the west side and the middle, and then two exits where you can exit at the middle and on the east side. And then, of course, on the west side, coming out of the tennis courts, you can exit out of the west side too. So theoretically, there'll be three exits and two entrances to the, to the parking area.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much. The reason I asked that this be pulled is I was just a little concerned because, oh, first of all, I think it's a great plan. It really does two things, it improves the flow as ADA access and adds the nineteen additional parking spots. My concern, though, was that the parking spots that we're adding along the access road on the east side or west side is that I was just afraid that some people might object that we are taking some of the green space and adding parking spaces along there. So given that we have this COVID crisis, we've already been accused a couple of times of, of using the COVID pandemic to so-called push things through, and I just didn't want to hear that again. So I thought, well, pull this and make sure anybody who's watching can see clearly what, what we're planning to do here. And I thought, oh, I do have a question, Director Semino. If we were to wait two weeks before we approve this, will that cause any unacceptable delays or other problems?
I spoke to the contractor that we would be awarding it to, and they would not be able to start until mid-June. So that's a good three weeks away. If we wanted to do any outreach on it or not, but any changes in it, if we did award the contract, would lead to a change order if, if necessary.
Okay, so the risk we're taking, if we were to push this out, is that, say, there was a big outcry about it, and somebody had a good point that maybe we shouldn't do this and propose a different alternative, alternative, then we could have some, the extra cost of the change order and perhaps even a delay in getting it completed. But, so I'd like to hear from the other councilmen on this, I mean, for me, I just, again, just want to be a little bit cautious and make sure that people have the opportunity to know what we're doing. I'm not proposing that we do any additional outreach, but I'm sure there's people that are listening online that will post it all over Facebook or social media in one way or the other with some concerns, or somebody could be just calling us with concerns. But just wanted to give it a little bit more time to just make sure people can see what we're up to here. So before we have that discussion, I suppose I should open it up for a public comment, but are there any questions for staff on this project?
Maybe, maybe you've already said it, but on the west side where you're going to be cutting into existing sod and turf, how many, how many net, how many new parking spaces are going to be in that location?
Councilmember Goss, that I think is going to add seventeen parking spots.
Okay, that's where most of them are then, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So yeah, and I guess the, it makes sense now that you mentioned it, Mr. Mayor, but it wasn't that clear to me. So we were, we're adding the spaces on that west side access road at the expense of existing grassy area?
Yeah.
Got it, okay. I'm, look. Makes sense, did not trigger, I did, should have been obvious to me, but didn't realize that, so thanks for clarifying.
Okay, any other questions? Well, let's open it up for public comment, and we'll wait just a minute so that people can call in if they would like to talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, there are no callers for public comment.
Okay, all right, let's bring it back to council for discussion, so you know, my question to my colleagues on the council is, you know, first of all, I, you agree with what we're doing here, we've talked about it before, and does it make sense to maybe delay it? I'm okay with approving it tonight if everybody feels that way. Or would you prefer we wait two weeks and just give it a little more time to, you know?
But Mayor, I, I, you know, I appreciate you calling it out and recognizing that it does take away from some green space, but I, I think over the years, whether post-pandemic or pre-pandemic, the sentiment is the same, but there's definitely been a call for more parking, especially for the age group that's being, that's using the area, so I'd be okay approving it today, the additional space I know is needed. Again, recognizing that does take away from some green space, and I think it's important to, to point that out, and I'd be okay approving today. If, if the council, really, if we have a majority at stake and we want to wait to provide some input, I'd be fine that way also.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I'm totally fine approving this tonight, I have no reservations whatsoever. I think this is a, something that a lot of people have wanted for a long time.
I'm, the Goss family is a house divided, we walk by there all the time, and, you know, we can see they've already taken a couple trees out, and it's already changed the character of that side of Sierra Vista Park. There's no question that putting seventeen parking spaces in there is going to alter the, the feel of that part of the park. But I'm also keenly aware of having spent so many years over there in Pony and Little League, that we need the parking. I mean, people either park there, or they're going to park in front of other people's houses over the next, you know, when, on big weekends, block and two blocks away, which brings up all kinds of issues. Not the least of which are safety issues. So I think that, I, I think I'm ready to do this tonight, and Mr. Mayor, if you feel strongly enough about this, I'll, I'll join you. I'll, I'll look for your lead on this, but I, I feel like I can approve it tonight if, if we're all ready to do that.
Okay, well, I, I do agree also, I strongly agree that the parking on that side is a good idea, just like for the reasons you say. I mean, it's a safety issue, and it does take some of the traffic away from the neighborhoods around during busy days, and it's, you know, during Little League season, of course, but then again, Rose Bowl, I mean, Rosefloat is the same thing, it's hard to get a parking space anywhere around there. A few folks would humor me, I would just prefer to let it go to another meeting, and then I'm just going to ask that we put it on the consent calendar at that time and just approve it, but this just gives a little more opportunity, just to make sure that the public is aware of it, you know? I think most people would agree also that this is a good thing to do.
So I'm good with that.
Okay, so let's do that, Mr. City Manager, if you could just put it on the agenda for next time on the consent calendar, then, you know, we don't, nothing earth-shattering comes up, we'll just approve it then.
Happy to, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move into discussions. Number one, consideration of the resolution approving the Sierra Madre Cares Initiative.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this a little bit at the last council meeting. Staff has worked really hard with businesses and with chambers to get plans together. Currently, we have finalized plans for four on-street parking locations, multiple on-sidewalk parking locations, and one on-parking lot dining location. As we were going through the approvals needed, we realized that the city has some ordinances that would make this difficult. The most pressing is an ordinance which doesn't allow any tarps, tents, or pop-ups within a certain number of feet of a building, and only allows them to remain in place for three days. For the businesses who wanted to use this for their parking lot, for example, it would, it would be impossible to both comply with the ordinance and also to participate in the Sierra Madre Cares program. In addition to that, we're asking council to temporarily waive enforcement of sidewalk obstructions as long as the, the outdoor dining complies with ADA requirements and public safety. So what we're asking tonight is twofold, one, to suspend enforcement of these ordinances until the local state of declared emergency has been lifted, and two, to authorize, the staff report says thirty thousand, but we actually would like thirty-five thousand dollars for, to get this program implemented this year, beginning later this week.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Just quick clarification, so you said the thirty-five thousand is now what you're proposing, what was additional five thousand anticipated for?
So, Mayor Pro Tem, initially, when we went through to do this, we had proposed using what are known as K-rails to barricade the cars from the street, and it would have been very effective, but also very temporary-looking and not very aesthetically pleasing. The new proposal actually swaps out the Jersey barriers or K-rails with a number of bollards that are smaller and reflective and places decorative fencing on the inside of the bollards along with planters on the outside. We also were initially going to level the area using asphalt, but after we started to meet with the businesses in the middle of the day, we realized the heat might not be such a good idea. So instead, we are going to allow the restaurant owners to build decking, to level out the curve on, on the street. So the, that added Uh, so the, that added a little bit of expense, but we saved some money on, on the fencing, so it's only a little bit more than the thirty thousand we were initially requesting.
Okay, and thanks, City Manager, but you were saying that you're gonna allow the businesses to build the decking, so it's the cost that's gonna be incurred by the businesses?
Uh, no, Mayor Protem, I apologize. We, we will be paying for it. Uh, the businesses will just be coordinating it.
Got it, thanks.
Yes, City Manager, I had a question, I guess, along those same lines. If a business, is it kind of a first come, first served thing or how's the space allocated? You know, I mean, there's, there's obviously the parking lot, uh, behind Corfu and that line of restaurants. Are we just allowing everyone to kind of get a space and, and figure it out, or, you know? How are you gonna divvy up the space, I guess?
Uh, Councilmember Heribida, we, we broadly divide, divided every restaurant into three categories. Um, and that is either you have the ability to do it on your own site, um, like Wisteria, for example, they have the parking lot. Uh, and they can use their parking lot as well as a sidewalk, but wouldn't need the street. Uh, there were restaurants who, who don't have it on their own site, and then they either fell into the category of don't have onsite parking available, but they have, uh, uh, servers, or they don't have it and they do have servers. If they are serving food, we're allowing the on-street parking as well as a sidewalk parking. That would be like a Corfu. Uh, if they, uh, don't have servers, but they provide food, then we're allowing it on the sidewalk. That would be like a subway. Uh, and then Kirsten Court's a shared area. But after we roughly divided everyone into these categories, we said if you want to do something else that makes more sense for your business, we're happy to, to work with you to make that happen. And an example of that is the Only Place in Town, instead of converting their parking, uh, would like to do parking on the street, which is fine because they can direct parking into their own parking lot, but the on-street parking, uh, works a little bit better for their setup. So we don't have hard and fast rules about where you get categorized, but once you pick the category that makes the most sense for your business, then you have to sign the, the proper street encroachment permit or out, outside dining permit, or, you know, whatever, uh, whatever the regulations are that apply to whatever category you fall into.
So, what, for, um, the Only Place in Town, what you meant was there, they wanna do their dining out in the street, not, you know, I think you said parking.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I probably, I'm getting the out, outdoor parking, outdoor dining confused. Yes, the outdoor dining over the parking in the street.
Yeah, okay. Now, how about further down, further east, like, uh, say in front of Corfu and, uh, the, the French restaurant there? How many spaces are you, are you gonna take up? All those spaces in front of the restaurants or for dining?
Uh, no, Mayor, I, I think, uh, for individual restaurants, it's between three and four spaces. If the restaurants are close together, uh, we try and talk with them about combining spaces. But a lot of this becomes where's your proximity to a, a bump out or a bow out? The closer we can put someone to a bump out or bow out, the safer it is, and also the safer it is for cars on the other side to back out. So this is really, right now, it's, it's temporary, it's coming together, but this is, is not a one-size-fits-all program at all. We're really trying to work for whatever is best for the specific business and working to accommodate the needs that they have. And then we understand what's gonna happen with the county and the state, say for home orders, we, we're telling them all, look, we'll adjust and we'll find a permanent solution, but right now, let's figure out a way to make this work for your business.
I see. Okay, so in Kirsten Court also, you're talking about the north side of the diagonal. It's all gonna be seating and uh, convert all that parking to seating on the north side?
Mayor, about half of it is gonna be seating. The other half, we're gonna, um, relabel to curbside pickup only or curbside parking only. Excuse me. And then that, that will help people who wanna eat out, uh, but don't necessarily wanna sit outside. So we don't wanna restrict the parking so they can still come and go. Also, if you're not using a restaurant, if you're going to the drugstore, for example, we wanna make sure there's still sufficient parking to meet the needs of the non-restaurant businesses.
Yeah, uh, just one more thought. Have we thought about just putting more tables out in the, the grassy area in Kirsten Court just to allow people to just get takeout and just walk across the diagonal and just sit there and eat their dinner?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we, uh, Director Smino may have already ordered that, uh, we were going to do that as part of the Kirsten Court refresh. So we're just pushing forward when we purchase it. Um, but I, I think we have about ten thousand dollars worth of tables and chairs that will go into the Kirsten Court area just for everyone to use and enjoy when they're outside.
Okay, one more question about that. Uh, if you were to order takeout with alcoholic beverages, will you be able to consume those alcoholic beverages out there in a common area?
Uh, I, I'll let, uh, the deputy city attorney correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe, uh, they could uh, go to the common, the common area and consume alcoholic beverages. Uh, they need to go through ABC. It has to be, um, onsite for that restaurant. So they can extend outside, but they wouldn't be able to go through whatever the extension of premise was for the specific restaurant selling, uh, beer.
Okay, so each, each restaurant will have a designated area that is theirs, so.
That's correct. And again, some will be on the sidewalk, some will be on the street, some will be in, in the parking lot or, or a mix and match of multiple of those.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. City Manager, I thought there were some sort of COVID-nineteen exclusions for, uh, takeout alcohol, things of that nature.
Councilmember Goss, there are. Um, so we've met with, um, the Buck, for example, we forwarded the information to the brewery. Um, it has to be, uh, sold in conjunction with, uh, what's called a bona fide meal. Uh, and they can go outside. Uh, the Buck, for example, we're talking with them about, uh, extending out back onto the property that they control. Um, and then as long as the sale of beer or alcohol happens with a bona fide, uh, food order, they're able to then extend their premises per the latest, uh, ABC order.
So, but that, but that, uh, extension somehow doesn't work in the, uh, Kirsten Court area where we're gonna have the tables?
The, not in the, the, Councilmember Goss, not in the common area where, where we would just put tables, uh, out. It would have to be in connection with the restaurant uh, that sold, uh, the beverage.
Right, thank you.
Well, if I can follow up one more time on this now, is it possible in the, in the public area to partition that off to say that, uh, this little part of it belongs to Corfu, this little part belongs to Mother Moo, and this little part to Starbucks? Could we do that? Is it, or does it have to be adjacent and connected to the storefront itself?
It, it doesn't have to be adjacent to Mayor. Uh, however, we have to be serving food in that area too, so we wanna make sure that Corfu is able to appropriately serve the meals without crossing the street, for example. Um, so I, when we work with the individual owners, again, um, if they have a need, we work really hard to meet that. So if we hear this come up from one of our restaurants that serves beer or alcohol, uh, we will work within the ABC guidelines to make sure that they can be accommodated.
That would be pretty cool if we could do that, but I'm just trying to figure out a way to get, uh, around some of these ABC restrictions. You know, anybody who's traveled to Europe, uh, they don't seem to have these hangups about alcohol consumption in public, and I really like it, so.
So Mayor, I do agree. But I, I think there's some value to having, um, a common area space, especially in, in our town. I know that we have some, um, families that go to one place to buy some other mues and go to another place to buy a sandwich, but, um, I, I'm with you on that, um, point, Mayor, but, uh, I, I wanna make sure we preserve some of that common area space.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, good. Okay, so any other questions? All right, so let's open it up for public comment. And while we're waiting, I'm gonna step away for just a minute here.
At this point, there are no callers for a public comment.
Do we have anybody that is, um, waiting to comment?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any callers for a public comment at this time.
Okay, good. Let's bring it back to council. So, any comments?
I'll, I'll go. I'll go ahead. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Please, please. No, I was just gonna say I'm supportive of this. I mean, I was really excited when, um, we learned, when I learned that, uh, there's efforts of actually the city investing in this. As, uh, you know, we've been really limited in what we can provide our, our businesses in terms of support. I'm glad we were able to get that CDBG funding. Uh, but I just think this is another way of the city, um, supporting our local businesses, and I'm excited about some of the, uh, creativeness with this. I know there are other cities that have considered this, but I feel like we really were talking about it earlier, so, um, I, I'm excited to support this, but I, I'll wait till we have other comments before I make a motion.
Yep, I wanted to, yeah, uh, agree with that. And just very, uh, happy as usual with you, Mr. Matter, Mr. City Manager and your staff. You guys, again, have tackled a, a really vexing problem head-on, came up with some creative ideas. You're way ahead of the curve in terms of the higher levels of government in the state. And, uh, I hope you keep doing that. I'm sure you will. So this is just fantastic. I can't wait to get down there to the, uh, the chairs you have set aside for the council, right? Just kidding, just kidding.
I agree with all that. I mean, I, I think the only thing I'll add is hopefully we can just stay flexible and take the lead under the, you know, the auspices and the, you know, as long as the law allows. If, if business owners want, restaurant owners want certain things that aren't necessarily in place now, hopefully they can come back to staff and staff can work with them without staff coming back to city council. So that'd be my only, I think it's a great idea. I, I do think, I'm kind of with the mayor. I ca, I kind of wish they, there could be open, uh, open alcohol drinking in Kirsten Court. I think that'd be very fun, but, um, if, to the flexibility point, if we get to that point, I wouldn't be all that angry or upset. So, um, I think this is a good thing and, and yeah, to the extent that things need to be changed or, or changed midstream, uh, very, very confident that staff can get that done. So I, I'm in approval.
Great, okay, so are, are we approving thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
That's the request, Mayor.
Okay, and I think this is a, a very, very modest, but important investment in our community and our businesses. Say it again, these local businesses are here for the enjoyment of Sierra Madre residents and, uh, you know, if, uh, several of them were to go out of business, uh, we all suffer for that, so I'm really happy to make that investment in our businesses. So with that, uh, Mayor Protem, you had a motion or?
Yes, yes, and I, I appreciate, um, our priorities with adult beverages against the council. Uh, with that, I move to approve resolution, uh, number twenty dash thirty-three, um, approving the Sierra Madre Cares Initiative.
Uh, Mayor Protem, we should, um, move to, um, move with the amendment, uh, for thirty-five thousand, cause I believe currently it's written as thirty thousand.
Yes, alright. So, um, I amend my, uh, move and to approve resolution number twenty thirty-three for, uh, Sierra Madre Cares to approve for thirty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor John Capocha?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Arizbende? Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember John Carabedian?
Hi.
The motion to approve resolution twenty dash thirty-three with the amendment to increase the amount to thirty-five thousand dollars was passed by unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next on the agenda is MS four implementation MOU. Mr. City Man-
Yes, and, uh, good evening, Mayor Capocha and members of the city council. This is James Carlson, your analyst. Um, discussion item number two is a consideration of a memorandum of agreement. I'll call it a MOA. And it's between the County of Los Angeles and the cities of Arcadia, Bradbury, Duarte, Monrovia, and ourselves. And the purpose for this MOA is for the beginning im- implementation of our revised watershed management plan. And staff's recommendation this evening is that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the MOA. The Rio Hondo San Gabriel Rivers Water Quality Group, which I'll refer to as group, is comprised by the above-mentioned entities. I also included in your staff report a brief, um, summary of the evolution of the two watershed management plans that we have created and where we are, are at in the process of, of implementing and staying in compliance with our MS of four permit. I have also listed the, the five projects as well as briefly went through the scope of work for the MOA work over the next two years. Sierra Madre's portion of this MOA will be one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fourteen per year. And we are balancing that off with our estimated one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year of our Measure W local return. Um, and that's pretty much it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, does anybody have questions? All right, well, I'm gonna, I'll start in. If we, if we complete all these projects, who benefits?
So beyond the, uh, implementation that we're looking at here, if all of these, um, are approved and we receive regional funding from Measure W, um, the beneficiaries would be the, um, cities that participate in attaining water quality objectives.
So for, say, my next-door neighbor, what, how is her life better as a result of this? Or what, uh, what detriment to her existence is occurring right now that will be corrected by this?
Well, currently, our, our shared monitoring is showing exceedance in levels of zinc and bacteria in these watersheds of, along where the projects are.
And why are we measuring zinc?
Uh, it's a requirement of the permit.
And we, but we know that the Rio Hondo and San Gabriel Rivers are not impaired for metals.
That, that's correct, and, and you and I have been back and forth, and I've made a number of attempts to get that clarified with our Regional Water Quality Board. But, um, and perhaps Alex can chime in, but I don't know that it's the best bet to go against it at this time.
So the point is here, though, is we, we're gonna spend, you know, for Sierra Madre, I know, you know, we're getting this money because Measure W passed, so, you know, everybody's paying into this and part of that is the local return and the rest of the taxpayer money goes, uh, to, uh, projects that will be, you know, basically have to apply for a grant to get the, the money. But, you, you know, who, what, what are we fixing? We're not fixing any particular problem. I mean, right now, the water goes into these drainage channels. And, uh, uh, some of it is percolated before it gets past the, the Santa Fe spreading grounds. Uh, most of it gets, never gets past the, um, the big Whittier Narrow spreading grounds. Uh, nobody uses these waterways for any recreational, uh, you know, reasons. Yet we're gonna spend how much money to- Yet we're gonna spend how much money to get some zinc and some bacteria out of this water that eventually just percolates into the ground anyway?
So Mayor, I think, following the example of your neighbor, the primary benefit, this is, this is going to sound funny, but honestly, the primary benefit to a Sierra Madre resident is to live in a city that is in compliance with the 2012 municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 permit. The benefit to the water is negligible. The benefit to the pollution is negligible for a Sierra Madre resident. The regulations that the city is, must follow, must adhere to are not going to go away. So our choice is to comply as cheaply as possible with projects that may receive regional funding or not be part of the group that management analysts lists and potentially have to still comply with the permit, but do it on our own. That will likely be a much higher cost. So we have to kind of bifurcate the question of, do the regulations for a Sierra Madre resident make sense as listed? Or do we have to comply with the regulations as a government? And the side where we come down to is because we are being forced to comply, we want to do it as cheaply as possible.
Okay, well, thank you for that honest answer. But I mean, but anybody listening to this should be very disturbed by what they heard. Is it basically, I'll rephrase it another way, is that we are going to spend an awful lot of money for a bureaucratic objective that isn't really going to improve anybody's life, one iota. But we're gonna spend, you know, millions of dollars to satisfy a regulatory regime here. But the other question is, why don't we wait to see what happens with the outcome of the lawsuit that was settled in favor of the cities and it's been on appeal and we still haven't heard the result of that appeal? Why aren't we waiting before we proceed again with that? And the other thing is, the regional board is in the process of issuing a new permit. Why don't we wait to see if they follow their own rules and not impose a water quality objectives for waterways that are not on the impaired list? So in other words, they created this regime to say that, okay, we've got all these rules. The first step is to determine that a waterway is impaired. The second step is to figure out what the water quality objectives are so that we can mitigate that impairment. There's been no impairment and yet we are still faced with water quality objectives to fix a problem that doesn't exist. So why don't we just wait?
Mayor, we certainly could wait. Again, we don't feel that the regulations, even as the new stormwater permit is being written, are going to be substantially different or applied substantially differently than the one we have today. The court order found a number of things, but the primary one for us was that when the stormwater permit was issued, it did not take cost into consideration. So this time going around, they have to take cost in consideration, but that doesn't mean they have to create a program that is lower cost. They just have to consider the impacts of what those costs are. We've received no indication that the new permit is going to be less onerous or less cumbersome on governments and not signing the MOA again has the risk of Sierra Madre now being exposed and having to go alone. This takes most of our local return. So if you remember, the county passed the stormwater tax, I've measured W, I forget the entire name, the Water Resiliency and Stormwater Act and it passed. So one of the major complications in cost was there wasn't a funding source. Now there's a funding source. So again, when you describe this as a bureaucratic scheme, I agree with you, but that doesn't mean we still don't have to comply with it in Sierra Madre.
I, maybe this is just wishful thinking, but I thought with the next issue of the permit, they will follow the rules that were created about how to determine mitigation for a waterway. You know, it's just, it's inconceivable to me that we are spending all this money to fix a problem that literally, literally doesn't exist. So, okay, so you heard it, folks. We're gonna take your taxpayer money and we have to spend it because, you know, the county passed the tax and this is what the tax is supposed to be used for and we're gonna waste the money by building stuff. And that's the way it is. So, okay, I don't have any more questions. So should we open it up for public comment? While we're waiting, I'll just, one more comment. I believe Sierra Madre, if it was just us, we, this would not have passed. But we're part of the whole LA County, so I think some of the outreach we've made to the citizens of Sierra Madre to vote against this, we did the right thing by not voting a majority in favor of this. But it's too bad because the rest of the county voted for it and now we're dragged along into this. So the good news is that none of this money is coming out of general fund. It's coming out of the tax money that was, is appropriated local return to us. So it's there and we're gonna spend it. So is there anybody in line to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, there are no calls for public comment.
Okay, well, let's bring it back to the council. This is one where I agree with the city manager. Is that if we don't go along with this, the risk is that we will have to build something and go it alone and we may have to dip into our general fund to do it. So I'm gonna hold my nose and vote in favor of it.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Councilmember Harabedian, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, there's, we've been having this debate for four years, so I don't really, I think the mayor just summed up everyone's views pretty well. And I think holding, holding our nose and voting for it is probably the, you know, the best way of describing it. Hopefully, in the best case scenario, if these projects end up being built, which it's not clear because the new permit, as we know, will be coming out shortly, the next, I don't know, year or two. If these projects are being built with this money, then hopefully they do some good. But, you know, at this point, it seems like the cheapest option to avoid litigation, frankly.
Can I ask a question real quick? Mr. City Manager, what is the opportunity cost of that money? If we're, if we weren't going to spend it this way, do we have the ability to use it in another way? Or is it constricted by the law, the money coming from the county?
Well, it's constricted that it has to be used for the purpose of the tax as it was passed, which it is pretty restrictive. If we were going alone, then we would find water resiliency, water capture, or water recharge projects to do here. The idea is the scale of us doing it ourselves, when our local return is maybe $150,000 right now, it would be very difficult to implement in a cost-effective way that brings the benefit of the dollars spent.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Mayor, you persuaded me not to vote for this. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it. I know it's gonna pass. I don't wanna, you know, stick in the mud, I guess, but I am sick and tired of this. For, you're right, Councilmember Harabedian is right, four years of this and it doesn't get any happier. It doesn't make any more sense. We literally have no problem. We're gonna spend good money on something that's not necessary and that's, you know, I don't know if we're elected to do that or not. But I do understand the trade-off here. I understand what we're up against potentially if we don't. That, to me, that, that little risk on the horizon, that's the one thing here that seems to have us all hooked.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like voting against it just to make a statement here, but there's risk to it. I mean, as City Manager is telling me that somebody had dropped out of our group once already, then they wanted to come back in and now they have to go it alone, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, being little Sierra Madre here, we just don't wanna be going it alone on anything. Where, I mean, these are, there are some pretty powerful forces at work here and we're just a tiny little community of less than 11,000 people and we just cannot, you know, we just can't stand up to that kind of pressure that these organizations can put on you. So it's, to me, it's tragic, but, you know, we've been trying, a lot of people have been involved in trying to get their arms around this and fix it, but it's.
You know, while this is going on, I mean, there are legitimate environmental issues that are not getting solved because this is going on.
Right.
That's, to me, the big problem is it detracts from a legitimate agenda that would be, could be done, I think, in a more sensible manner and more cost-effective and it's just a very painful. I, you know, I'm not gonna, I don't want to waste any more of our time. I'll end up supporting this, I guess. I feel like everybody else, though. I hope the public someday knows, goes back and looks at the tape. We're, we're being forced to do this, folks, and we really don't have a choice, I guess.
Well, I'm not gonna make a motion. One of you people.
I'm not making the motion.
I can make a motion, but I do appreciate, Mayor, you know, you've really been always in the forefront of this and arguing and really fighting for Sierra Madre and this has been extremely frustrating over the last four, five, six years. We've tried to find other options and, and we always come to, to just just points where we have no other option. So just like all of you, I mean, we'll, we'll probably be voting for this with, we like to use the term with our, what do we say?
Holding our nose.
With our plug, nose, holding our nose, whatever the term may be. But yeah, I mean, I, it is good in a way that it's not coming out of our general fund, but this is something that the county had put on the ballot. And I did forget, Mayor, that the city of Sierra Madre, I think, really did not support this measure if you looked at our city alone. But again, given our circumstances, I will make the motion to approve the memorandum of agreements between County of Los Angeles, cities Arcadia, Bradbury, Duarte, Monrovia, and Sierra Madre for the implementation of revised watershed.
I'll second.
Okay, before I call for the vote, I want to make one more comment, and this is a positive comment. Now, again, it still sounds pretty bad, but when you look at the work that this group has done in reducing the cost from the original projects that were submitted, they really deserve an accolade for bringing the cost down to something that was just totally outrageous to something that is merely bad, you know? But that's quite an accomplishment. So I do want to give James credit and the others that have been working on this for coming up with a better proposal to, to meet our permit requirements. So they deserve a lot of you know, recognition for that. So with that, can we have a vote?
Mayor John Capocha?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Erzmann.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Aye.
The motion to authorize the city manager to sign the MOU as written was passed by unanimous vote.
Hey, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, next up is assessment districts.
Director Sumino.
Start off by apologizing. I'm looking at my staff report here and there are no alternatives. In the staff report, I have a little cut and paste mistake here. As for the report, I'm gonna ask Kev Tarkudian, our contract city engineer, to come in and give a report. Thank you.
Kev? Thank you, Mr. Sumino. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is the annual routine approval of the city's assessment districts. This is the first phase of the approval process, as you well know. Tonight, there's a resolution of intention to be adopted and to approve the engineer's report and also to set June 23, 2020, as a date for a public hearing on this matter. So staff recommendation is simple. No changes to the eight districts that are in front of you and approval of the resolution of intention 20-32 and approval of the engineer's report and June 23, setting up a public hearing for that date. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I stepped away for just a second. Okay, so are we at the point where we're asking questions? Okay, anybody have questions? No questions, I'll open it up to public comment. I don't think we've ever had public comment on this topic. We have it every year. So it's not likely that somebody's gonna call in to talk about this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, at this point, there are, there are no callers for this item.
Okay, let's bring it back to council for discussion. Any comments?
I'll move for approval. Penny, any comments?
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, if you can call for the vote.
Mayor John Capocha?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rochelle Erzmann.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Aye.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Here, aye, sorry.
The motion to, and there are four items, all of the items were approved as presented, but I'll read them just for the record. One is to maintain the same level of assessment with no increases for next fiscal year. Two is to approve resolution 20-32, initiating proceedings for the districts indicated in the report. Three is to set June 23, 2020, as the date for a public hearing on the matter for the city, of the city's assessment districts. And four is to approve the engineer's report. And that, all of that was approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, next on the agenda, downtown business district, downtown business assessment district.
Thank you, Mayor. Discussion item four concerns the potential formation of a downtown business assessment district. So staff is recommending that the city council discuss whether to proceed with the formation of a consolidated downtown assessment district. Changes in assessments would take place starting fiscal year 2021, '22. Staff is also requesting that a discussion on the potential use of surplus fund balances to subsidize the first two years of new assessments should the formation of a new district proceed and is successful. So the city currently maintains four districts specifically for the downtown, one landscaping, one parking, and two lighting districts. Two of these districts currently operate at a surplus and the other two at a deficit and require a subsidy from the city to perform those maintenance. In 2018, staff went through the bidding process and solicited NBS to assist in the restructuring and consolidation of the existing districts into one downtown district. This one downtown district would cover the existing maintenance, improvements, beautification projects, and events. And on July 23, 2019, the council called for a public hearing on the matter, but the proposed consolidation was ultimately defeated with 42 ballots received in favor and 46 opposed. So for some background on these districts, the two central business districts are direct assessment districts, which means that So for some background on these districts, the two central business districts are direct assessment districts, which means that they are divided um, among parcels based on lot size and frontage width. So these two districts do not collect enough money to cover the maintenance costs for these districts. And require combined about thirty-five thousand dollars in subsidies from the city. Um, meanwhile, the other two districts are ad valorem, which means they're based on property values. These two districts, their revenues exceed expenditures. And their combined fund balance is about six hundred forty-three thousand dollars. Um, so the idea from last year and potentially this year as well would be to combine the cost centers of these different districts into one single district. This would result in an overall reduction in charges for those already subject to the assessment. Um, however, considering the current um, COVID nineteen pandemic, we should take in into consideration the financial burden placed on property owners and businesses. Um, should the council decide to proceed with the district formation? And if the initiative succeeds. So the following process may be implemented to use surplus funds from district number three, zones A and B. Um, this would incrementally adjust property owners to new assessment charges over the upcoming fiscal years. So if the city council chooses, it would have to resolve not to assess parcels for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Surplus funds would then be transferred into the general fund for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, which would then be dedicated to assist businesses in the newly consolidated district. Or it could be transferred into the new district fund to offset future assessments. Um, an alternative use of those surplus funds would be to again, charge zero dollars in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, then ramp up, so charge fifty percent of that proposed assessment in twenty-two, twenty-three. And then their full proposed assessment would not be charged until fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and onward. With this assistance, property owners already subject to assists, assessments would save on average about two thousand dollars per parcel over fiscal years twenty-one to twenty-three. Um, this would be about a total of a hundred eighty-one thousand between those eighty-five parcels. Um, and then from fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four and onward, those assessment charges for those eighty-five parcels would be on average about six hundred dollars less per parcel. Then in comparison to average assessments in the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. So again, staff is just asking for council to provide direction on whether to proceed with this formation and what to use do with potential use of surplus funds.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what questions do we have?
I have a question, mayor. Thank you, analyst. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing it Kownatzky uh, correctly for that report. Did I pronounce it correctly?
The W kind of sounds like a V, so Kuvnotsky, but very close.
Kownatzky, I'll practice that. Um, you know, I thought, I thought it was interesting about the uh, assessments for the upcoming fiscal year and ramping it up and um, but can you talk a little bit about the thought process behind that and why that's proposed?
Sure. So I think our main idea was that first of all, this would be a good um, use of the surplus funds from districts zone A and B, which already operated at a surplus. Um, this would benefit all of the uh, new districts that would be set into this consolidated district. And also thinking about the current pandemic, um, this would be a good way to slowly ramp up to full funds. We know that a lot of property owners and businesses are gonna be hurt. Um, this was a good incentive to get people voting on it and also to just get better idea of what they're paying over the upcoming year.
Great, thanks for sharing that.
Okay, what other?
Can I, yeah, I just, so are we giving direction on, and thank you for the presentation, it was very good. Um, are we providing you know, direction on whether or not we want to proceed with the consolidation and or whether we wanna um, if we do or we don't, adjust somehow within the rules that are in play now, how we're allocating funds?
So for the first part, we are looking for direction on whether to proceed with this formation, given the pandemic and giving um, given outreach and whether we feel it's comfortable for people to vote during this pandemic. That's the first part. Um, and the second part, this uh, potential use of surplus funds. We're looking for direction on that should the consolidated district pass.
Got it. Okay, should it happen? Okay, great.
And, and a quick follow-up question to that. So with, with the surplus dollars, I mean, I know we're really limited as to how we can utilize those dollars. Um, given if we do provide direction to continue forward, we, I understand we can use some of our consults. Uh, use the surplus money for consulting dollars. But what, you know, at the end of the day, let's say it still doesn't pass and we continue to put it forward. Where, how else can we use this surplus money?
Should I defer to the city manager on that one?
Mayor Pro Tem, the funds collected uh, are restricted and can only be used for lighting in the downtown district area. So one of the reasons we're, we're trying to pass this is not just to lower taxes, but we are collecting funds every year that can't be spent for any usable purpose. And uh, in the other, the other funds, we're not collecting enough. But what it boils down to is current parcel uh, current parcels are paying six hundred dollars more per year than they have to. And the vast majority of that six hundred dollars is going into lighting districts that is so restrictive that the city can't, can't use it in any uh, meaningful way.
I think that clarification is really helpful as we consider this issue. Thanks.
So I, my question is, are, are we proposing, have, it doesn't mention this here, but are we proposing to keep the proposed district the same as we proposed last time, or is this di- different this time?
This proposed district is essentially the same as last time.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear.
This proposed district is essentially the same as last time.
Okay, so what, what will be different this time to make it pass than last time?
So mayor, there's
The big difference this time is probably public outreach. Gabe, if you want to continue.
Uh, that's what I was gonna say. We, we plan a different uh, public outreach strategy this time. Uh, when we talk about the vote uh, that failed, it, it was very close, but the road glaring thing when we went back and looked is that a majority of people did not vote that would have benefited. And we could go down the list and find people that would have saved sixteen hundred, twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars a year that simply didn't vote. And we have to assume that's because we didn't reach them. Um, not because they enjoy giving the city an additional fifteen hundred dollars for a lighting district.
Yeah. So how are we gonna do it differently this time? Do we?
So the, the, and the second part is also the strategy, sorry, to talk about um, giving a, a bigger rebate back to the businesses currently paying for the, the property owners by not charging an assessment ne- next year and a half assessment the following year. Uh, so the outreach, in, in addition to highlighting that change in strategy, the outreach would be much more direct where we would send a postcard that says, this is your assessment, this is your proposed assessment. We'd send a second postcard saying, this is your assessment, this is your proposed assessment, and a ballot's coming. The ballot would come and then we'd send another postcard that said, your ballot came. This is your assessment, this is your proposed assessment, please make sure you voted.
Yeah, and if you need a replacement ballot, we'll give that to you, right?
Correct, mayor.
Okay, has, uh, I know part of the issue too is the absentee landlords. Uh, for lack of a better term, but we have a majority of the businesses here do not own the property that they're running their business out of, and the landlord is somebody else. Have the, the businesses advocated for this to their landlords? I mean, they don't receive a direct benefit. The benefit goes to the property owner, not necessarily the business, but is there a way to tie that together somehow?
Mayor, last time around, uh, the outreach was most, that we did was mostly to the property owners. And we would only conduct uh, outreach to the businesses um, if we were unable to reach the property owner. Um, so we, we could ask the businesses to, to advocate, uh, we could ask the chamber, for example, to take a lead. Uh, but ultimately, the benefit goes to the property owner. And if they choose to pass that along to the business, that is their choice, that, it's an important clarification.
Okay, it just, it just seems to me that uh, the business stands to benefit indirectly if their landlord is more financially viable. I mean, hopefully, they wouldn't raise the rent or they uh, you know, could reinvest some of that money in the building or something like that. It just uh, I just think that's something we should try to pursue. And also uh, what was the involvement of the chamber last time around? Were they instrumental in trying to drive this to pass, or were they indifferent to it, or how did they feel about it?
Mayor, as I recall, last time the chamber supported it and hosted a town hall event that was very well attended. Um, I, we haven't done uh, any outreach to them this go-around. We're waiting to get direction from the city council. My assumption is they would be for something that uh, was a more efficient use of funds and, and save people money.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's open it up for a public comment.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, there are no callers for a public comment.
All right, let's uh, bring it back to council. Okay. What comments?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of pushing forward and trying to get this done again. And, you know, with the COVID crisis, I think voting will probably hopefully just go to an all-ballot vote with, you know, the business, I it's gonna be this, I, I don't think that necessarily should affect our our decision either way, really. I mean, I think that really it's getting getting outreach to the business owners, getting them a mail-in ballot. Uh, to ensure that they don't have to show up to a polling place and really focusing on the, the margin of error, you know, I mean, we know which which owners, I believe, voted against it. So I think that's where the majority of the campaign goes. Because this makes sense for everyone. It's just a matter of communicating to them. And some folks just didn't hear our message. So those that did hear the message uh, voted in favor. So I, I'm very much in vote, you know, in favor of going forward with this again. And in terms of how we use the surplus funds, I mean, given given where we are now, I mean, I think that to the extent we could, I think there's a conversation that needs to be had in the future about giving people money back, you know, giving business owners some rebates, giving helping them stay afloat. So uh, you know, I don't necessarily know where I stand on that now, but um you know, I think we need to be helping them in any way we can. This will save them on their taxes, but also to the extent we have surpluses, you know, going it back out uh, in some sort of, you know, pro-rata fashion, I don't know. But I, I can answer the first question now, which is I'm in favor of this, and I think you know, COVID pandemic or not, I think, I think we should push ahead.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harabedian?
I'll comment quickly. I, I mean, at the end of the day, this benefits not just our, our businesses, it benefits, you know, the entire uh, city and, and our community as to how we can use, utilize the dollars. It may be right now, it, it's, it's simply a waste to see these surpluses, and then we have deficits that have to be backfilled by uh, general fund. I think it's the communication piece. I think we can uh, I mean, this is not the greatest way to use the surplus dollars, but if the surplus dollars can be used for this, I, I mean, I, I think I'd go a couple of shots at this, but if we can give this one a go and make sure our communication is is clean, um, pulling in again, folks like the chamber, but um, I, I do like the, the structuring of the fees for the upcoming years and being able to show visually to the property owners as to what this means for them in terms of taxes, but also where the dollars go, I think is going to be and, and a, a strategy to help incentivize. So yeah, no doubt, um, supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Eric Pro Tem, councilmember Goss, any comment?
Have, have nothing to add. I, I, I think we have to move forward with it, and you know, I think we'll get it right the next time around. I'm pretty sure it's gonna pass.
Yeah.
I think that's a pretty sensible, uh, a sensible measure that I think business will see as such.
Yeah, I, and I really like the idea of giving a sort of a rebate or, you know, defer some of the uh, charges for two years here, fifty percent in the second year. But can, can I just ask one more question though? It says, should the, the council choose to do so, the process would be as follows? So first of all, it would have to pass, of course. Then we would, if it passes, then we would pass a resolution after that not to assess the par- the parcels for years twenty-one to twenty-two?
Uh, mayor, I, I think that's correct. I think uh, the same way that the previous agenda item was council up, um, passing a resolution for the assessment. I think you would have to pass a resolution saying zero assessment, and then the following year pass a resolution saying fifty percent. And then the third year, a hundred percent.
Okay, so that's not baked into the, the ballot itself, then?
Uh, the, the same way that um we passed the, the previous uh, agenda item with no increase, council could have passed it with a CPI increase. So you, you would have to look at how the engineers' report uh, is read. We can get um, this has to come back to council, so we can get a complete clarification around that uh, from the deputy city attorney. Uh, but that, that's how NBS um, has explained it to us.
Okay, well, if it's possible to bake it into the ballot, I think that would be more useful. And the same thing for the second part of that, uh, bullet number two. Uh, we have a choice of uh, moving the funds if it passes into the general fund. Which then may be dedicated to assist businesses or transfer into the new districts fund to offset future assessments. But if we transfer to the districts fund, are you saying here that that's all it could be used for is to offset future assessments, or or that's one of the things that can be done with the money?
Mayor, the, the second uh, point is intended to be a separate uh, discussion topic entirely. Council could, um, as Councilmember Harabedian uh, suggested, council could have a discussion about rebates. Uh, council could have a discussion about not charging assessments, which is what uh, staff is recommending. Uh, council could have a discussion about transferring funds into the general fund entirely, uh, not providing a discounted assessment and spending the money for any general purpose of the government. So I think tonight, uh, what we wanted was, should we go forward? Uh, and if you do want to go forward as a council, then either tonight uh, address the second discussion item or have staff bring forward all of the options, including the one we recommended before council decides how they want to proceed. So we're, we're looking for two separate uh, answers from council tonight.
Okay, so all right, so the first thing is, do we want to proceed? I think I'm hearing a definite yes on that one. So then the second part is, can you clarify that again? Do you, we want to talk about?
Mayor, if you'd like us to bring back options in addition to what the recommendation is, we're happy to do so at a future council meeting. And council can discuss the range of options. Now that we know we're going forward, or it sounds like that right now, if we are going forward, we can bring the discussion item back and we can lay out all of the options, including the recommended option.
Yeah, okay, and the reason I'm asking is because I thought like last time around that that surplus money then was going to be spent on the businesses. I don't remember a discussion that it could be possibly used for other general fund purposes. Maybe I just uh, you know, don't remember it correctly.
Uh, that's correct, mayor. The, the last uh, the, the last ballot measure was to use the funds exclusively uh, in, within the district. And the ideas at the time were around um, parking, uh, fixing up the back lots and also improvements to Kirsten Court. Uh, using the funds solely in the district is still an option that council uh, would have, and, and that's one that we could bring forward.
Okay, well, that's, I'd like to hear the range of options. Does everybody agree with that?
Agreed.
Okay, good. So right now you have direction to proceed ahead with the the Prop two eighteen process, and you will bring back all the various options with regard to use of the money.
Yes, mayor, we have clear direction.
Okay, cool. All right, great. Okay, number five, uh, parsec.
Mayor, I'm gonna turn this over to our human resources manager.
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council. Before you is the consideration of resolution twenty-three acquiring comprehensive citywide insurance coverage with the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority. I'll refer to as Parsac. And authorizing city staff to notify the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. As CJPIA, of the city's intention to withdraw effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The city has been a member of the CJPIA for over fifteen years, purchasing citywide, uh, general liability and workers' comp insurance. Uh, the CJPIA requires a twelve-month notice, uh, to withdraw from the insurance pool. However, if the city chooses to rescind the notice of intent to withdraw, the city may do so up until around, uh, April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Over the last several months, city staff has analyzed cities, uh, the cities' current, uh, insurance programs. And it was determined, uh, based on past and present, uh, experience, Parsac would provide insurance at a lower cost. As illustrated in attachments two and, um, and three in the staff report. Uh, Parsac is located in Sacramento and currently has thirty-five members within the pool. Noting that most, uh, members of the pool are similar to that of Sierra Madre. In addition to general liability and workers' compensation programs, Parsac also provides employment practice liability grants up to ten thousand. Which can be used for training, risk, risk management conference supplies, uh, safety supplies. Uh, they also have online target solution training software, which is currently being used by our fire department. Uh, in this case, it would be used citywide. Uh, they also have funding for police and fire lexible, uh, policies, which currently through the JPIA. Police lexible is covered, but not the, uh, fire lexible. Uh, earlier this year, Parsac conducted an underwriting analysis of the city's overall risk management operations. That included a thorough review of the city's workplace safety programs and policies. And based on this onsite risk assessment, Parsac is recommending entering membership at a self-retention, uh, SIR level. Of twenty-five thousand per occurrence for general liability and twenty-five, S, twenty-five thousand SIR for workers' compensation. However, after analyzing data, staff is recommending an SIR of twenty-five thousand for general liability, which is what Parsac is recommending. And fifty thousand SIR for workers' compensation. Under these SIR levels, the city will cover all claims up to twenty-five thousand for general liability and fifty thousand for workers' compensation. Any claims over in excess of the recommended SIR levels, Parsac will cover. Overall, the city does a great job managing risks, uh, and by joining Parsac, we would be participating in a pool. Uh, with similar sized cities, uh, that manage, manage risk well, thus maintaining lower annual premiums. Uh, in closing, staff is recommending that city council approve Resolution twenty twenty-three, adopting the citywide insurance coverage with Parsac. Effective July first, twenty twenty-one, and authorizing staff to notify CJPIA. Of the intention to withdraw effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Now, if you have to answer any questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, what questions you have?
I'll just ask the basic one, so the, the cost savings that we are projecting if we join Parsac is because our premiums will be reduced. Uh, and on the flip side, we'll just have to self-insure more money, right? So, on a yearly basis, I don't know how the accounting works, but from a cash, from a cash basis. We're probably putting out more money initially, but. Because of the, if you include the self-insurance, but assuming we don't actually use the self-insurance and it just goes back into the funds. Then we actually save the money, I guess I'm trying to figure out, do we save money if we are getting the same amount of claims and using up our own self-insurance?
So, Councilmember Harabedian, in, in general, uh, the, the way you phrase the question is correct. The savings come from a lower premium, the lower premiums, uh, are afforded. To the city of Sierra Madre because we do a good job of managing risk. Our current, uh, insurance agent, the CJPIA, is what's called first dollar coverage. And that means for every, every claim, they will pay from the first dollar on. Uh, and for that, uh, they charge higher premiums, uh, because there's less risk to the city. What ends up happening is cities that manage their risk well, like Sierra Madre, we end up subsidizing other CJPIA members. Who have no incentive to manage their risk well at all. In Parsac, um, after they do their onsite screening and, and invite you to join. Uh, the general philosophy with this group is if you do a good job managing risk, you should, um, share in that reward. So what we're recommending is instead of first dollar coverage, uh, for the areas where we do really good and workers' comp. Have twenty-five thousand dollar SIR, meaning for every claim, we pay the first twenty-five thousand. Uh, and, or fifty thousand, I'm sorry, and in general liability of twenty-five thousand SIR for every claim, we pay. Up, the dollars up to the first twenty-five thousand, and that's because general liability, liability is more sporadic and harder for us to manage. Overall, in our worst year, um, of claims we've had in, in the past five years, we still would have had an annual savings. Um, of about fifty thousand dollars, uh, on average, our annual savings would be about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so, over the past five years, uh, we've spent five hundred thousand dollars more than we have had to. Based on our actual experience and how well we manage risk.
So basically, it would be, we would have to experience a extraordinary amount of claims relative to what we usually experience. High-dollar claims to not save money going to Parsac. Or just have, you know, just the number of claims would have to be much higher.
That's correct, Councilmember Harabedian, it, it's not necessarily, um, if they're high-value claims, but it's frequency.
So what, I, we talked about this, so what, what are these other agencies missing that we're, seems like we've come to a. This seems totally reasonable, and I don't know why we wouldn't do it, but then I always ask the question of why isn't everyone doing it? And is, is the answer that some cities are just really bad at managing their insurance and this would be. Or their claims, and this would be actually more costly for the average city, because otherwise you would think that there's more than these thirty or forty. And they're pretty small agencies in there, um, I guess that my only concern was, you know, the peer group that is in Parsac just isn't that. I wouldn't say impressive or not impressive, it's just, uh, it's not exactly our, our peer groups.
From, from a risk management standpoint, the fact that we don't hear a lot about our peers is a good thing in government, right? If we're hearing a lot about these agencies that, that make the news, those are probably people that we don't want to share risk with. So Parsac has a different philosophy about managing and mitigating risk. Where CJPIA has a philosophy of, of paying for risk. It causes perverse incentives where you'll settle claims that you likely wouldn't settle if you were paying for it by yourself. And it gives you very little incentive to, uh, actually try and manage risk. Because you know that whatever happens, the insurance agent is gonna pay for in that year. Of course, at the end of the five-year period, they do a look back and you pay for those anyway. So, um, it's the same thing, it's, it's oversimplified, but, um, if you think of how you insure your home or your car. Um, no one here, I would assume on their car, has a zero-dollar deductible that will pay for everything. There's a certain amount of risk with your investment that you're willing to tolerate to pay less on an annual basis. That's a little oversimplified, but it's the same philosophy.
Yeah, yeah, that's helpful, I just, it would seem, and we've told JPIA that we're probably gonna do this, or at least we're pondering, I would think that they'd be fighting like hell to keep us in there. If we are, we're a net, they make money off of us, so, why aren't they? Go ahead.
They, they don't want us to leave, we're one of their, uh, good cities that, that manage well, they don't want us to leave.
And they haven't made an offer we can't refuse, you know, I mean, this is, this is a business decision, right? They haven't come back and said, well, here's how we would reduce your premium, I mean, it just seems irrational for them not to come back and try to give us a better deal.
No, they, they haven't done that, uh, they, they have, through the years, they have provided, uh, you know, tremendous resources for us. Uh, in, in terms of training, uh, you know, we, we've been able to, uh, take advantage of that. Um, they also, just the guidance that they've provided, and they've done a very good job in, in helping us manage the risk well that we've been doing. Um, but, you know, with Parsac, the, the cities that, uh, are in the pool. Uh, it's a much, much smaller pool, thirty-five versus a hundred and six, uh, compared to a hundred and sixteen with CJPIA. And the, the cities that are with, uh, Parsac, um, the majority of them are similar to us. And, uh, you know, and manage risk well, so we, it would be to our advantage to be with similar type cities. Uh, versus a variety of, uh, cities that are with CJPIA.
I follow that up, so, so CGPI, they have a lot of resources. Lot of trainings for risk management for staff and anybody who wants, really. How, how has that impacted, we, 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 we manage risk well, for sure. How has their, in, their involvement impacted our risk management? And do, would we lose some of that if we went to the other agency?
Yeah, they, they, they've been, uh, they've been great, they, they're there for me when, when we need them. Um, they've been able to provide guidance and support and, uh, definitely, definitely a lot of training and very good training. Uh, Parsac, uh, will provide very similar services, uh, they will be there to provide guidance when needed. Uh, they will, uh, also. Involve the agency when it comes to litigating any claims, high, uh, dollar claims. Uh, where we have a lot of authority in what, what the outcome is of the, of the claim, whereas with J, CJPIA. Um, we don't have that much, uh, control, uh, with the claims that, uh, that are high-dollar or being litigated. Uh, fortunately for us, we, we don't have that many large claims, a lot of our claims are much smaller and manageable. Uh, but in terms of training and, and Parsac will, doesn't provide as much training, uh, that CJPIA does. But they do have grants that, uh, they give to the city, um, every year that we could use towards training. Um, uh, so it would still, it would be roughly about the same. Uh, they do provide, um, annual training and they do have, uh, through the, uh. Through their employment, uh, risk, what is it, the Employment, um, Risk Management Authority, Irma, they also provide. Additional trainings within the region that we can also, uh, be a part of. So, it's gonna be an adjustment in terms of, of the training, but I think with, uh, the grants that they provide. And the resources that they provide the city, I, I think it'll, uh, it'll be okay, and we'll, we'll be around the same with, uh, with. The types of trainings that we get with this CJPIA.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, what other questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions, how long has Parsac been in existence?
Oh, good question, um, I, you know, I don't, don't know that, uh, don't have that answer for you right now. But I could get that information.
Are, are they growing, are they actively seeking out, uh, other low-risk clients? I mean, thirty, those are pretty small numbers, you know.
Yes, they are, they, um, uh, currently, they're looking at, uh, adding some, uh. Joining, emerging with another pool, uh, with also similar cities to Sierra Madre, so it would, uh, expand the, the pool. Um, but that's still in, in discussion right now, so there's nothing, uh. There's nothing to confirm that they are or not going with the, uh, with the merge, so that's still in discussion.
Okay, did, uh, when we joined the JPIA, I don't know if any of you were even around then, but. Did they go through a similar interview process and risk analysis to, to decide whether to accept us?
They did, um, in fact, I was here at the time that we, uh, made the transition from, uh, Perla to, um. Uh, Perma to, uh, CJPIA and the, they conducted a risk assessment. And at the time, uh, the risk management was being handled, uh, by someone else in, in, in a different way. But, uh, we still managed the, uh, the risk well at that time, so that they accepted our, uh, application. Uh, once they concluded their, uh, risk assessment of the agency.
Okay, so they all do this sort of thing, okay. I, I, in the staff report, there's a, a chart with the different options, is it possible to put that up on the screen?
You didn't provide that to the, uh, to James to put up on the screen, are you talking about one of the, the attachments?
Uh, the rate comparison and the loss experience.
Uh, unless, uh, James is able to get this, uh, that part of the report on there, but no, uh, we did not provide, uh, for a, uh. A PowerPoint on that.
Can we just talk about that chart, if he can put it up, great, if not, we'll just talk about it anyway, but. So basically, what's proposed is, uh, an SIR of twenty-five thousand dollars for general liability. And an SIR of fifty thousand for, uh, workers' comp. So, but when I look at the rates, it's like, okay, if we move from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand for general liability. Gosh, we save over a hundred thousand dollars right off. So I'm, I'm having trouble understanding, why don't we go all the way for the highest deductible? And is it, is it because we're uncertain about the budget fluctuations? I mean, yeah, that's a big surprise, all of a sudden you get a big hit where, uh, you had a claim and you'd only pay twenty-five thousand dollars. Now you have to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you saved that much to start with. Am I reading this wrong?
No, Mayor, you're, you're reading the chart correctly, the premiums will be lower. For the amount of risk we reduce to the agency to Parsac. Um, that, the hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand dollar levels, um, would save, uh, quite a bit of money for the city. But that's also, uh, in staff's mind, a, a pretty exceptional, uh, risk to take on. On an annual basis, where if you got, um, one, two, three big claims, um, that would really, uh, reduce the multi-year savings. Uh, so we're, we're trying to balance the cost savings with our tolerance for risk. And knowing that we have a litigious public, uh, sometimes in general.
Okay, but the chart below is our loss experience, that's what the, the claims were against us? With the JPIA?
Uh, that's correct, so if you, Mayor, if you look at, um, uh, under CJPIA loss experience, under total experience. Um, you can see what our losses would have been under, if there was a similar SIR to, um, Parsac. CJPI doesn't, uh, offer that, but if, if there was, you can see that the total experience always would have resulted in savings. And, um, over the past five years, uh, really over the past three years, we would have been fine with an SIR of a hundred fifty thousand. We would have saved a lot, but again, that, it's, that's an exceptional amount of risk to, to take on in, in any given year. Um, and it's, it's, Miguel and I, uh, we were talking about, should we go from twenty-five to fifty? And that was quite, quite the discussion, and we never, it never entertained our mind to go from fifty to a hundred. Uh, we're, it's just, we're, we're trying to be conservative in the amount of risk we're willing to take on.
Okay, let me, let me, uh, phrase it from, you know, just my own experience. And, you know, being the senior member on the council, I have a lot more experience with this than any of you, just because I've lived longer. But I have always, always, always taken the highest deductible on car insurance. And then after the cars, even my newest cars, even after they were a couple of years old, I canceled the collision insurance on them. And what that did for me also, not only am I like so far ahead after all these years and saving money. That's why I could retire early, but it also is a, an incentive to be damn careful when you drive. Don't cause accidents, because you're gonna, you know, it's gonna cost you now. And when, when I look at our healthy reserves that we have. I can't even see a problem, even if you've got a couple of claims and it costs you a couple hundred thousand dollars. The likelihood of that happening is very low, and if we started this program of being responsible ourselves. We would save so much money over time, then even when you got the big bad year where you had multiple claims. All the money you saved in the previous five, or all the money you're gonna save in the next five, is overwhelmingly favorable. So, again, what am I missing from this chart? I mean, I understand being risk averse and I appreciate that, that you and Miguel are thinking of it in those terms. But if we were a city that was spread bare and had minimal reserves, that'd be a different story. But we've been responsible up to this point in creating a healthy reserves. Now, if we just continue to be responsible and even more so at managing the risk ourselves. I think we're returning a lot of money to our taxpayers here, so. I think we're returning a lot of money to our taxpayers here. So.
Mayor. Mayor, I think um in the analogy with the car again, you're you're able to control your own actions. Uh that's largely true from a worker's compensation standpoint. It's why we manage it so well is because we are able to limit, uh to train and to influence those activities. Under our general liability, uh we can be doing nothing and get claims. And one of our highest claims um was something that the city had no fault, um no ability to control, and it was just someone uh who was claiming an injury on property. So it's the 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 idea that we're gonna open up a larger uh risk share when it's a group that we don't control or nor can we influence. And quite frankly, even if we win some of these cases, we still have to bear the cost. Um again, to uh we were looking at frequency of cases being the bigger issue than the high dollar uh of them. So when Parsac completed their risk assessment, they recommended we join at twenty-five thousand S I R for for both levels. Um, and we defer to their expertise. We we think they did a good job. Uh when Miguel and I looked at our actual experience, we thought we could, to your point, get a savings. But we're only comfortable doing it in the area where we can have direct influence over uh the actions that take place with our employees. General liability uh is an area that is sometimes totally out of our control and we have to bear that cost. And it it's not uh unthinkable to picture a year where we could get a handful of high claims that would wipe uh wipe out all of the previous years of savings that we had.
Okay, but in the past five years, the the record isn't indicating that though.
That that's true, Mayor.
Okay, I I you've answered my question, so if there's any other questions before we open up a comment?
Sorry, did everyone get to go ask their questions? Mayor Pro Tem, Councilor Goff.
I I have a comment, but I'll hold it for discussion.
Okay, I just have one more question. Is there some sort of, because this is a risk pool, if we leave J P I A, is there some sort of exit audit where they get to essentially say that we owe money on the way out?
Uh Councilor Harabedian, there's no uh exit audit that is in addition to what's already gonna happen. We already have to go through what's called the look back. Uh and they are most certainly going to charge us money uh as we leave, but it's not because we're leaving. It's something that would that would happen anyway.
When would when would they make that determination regularly? Uh pardon me, you just said that they wouldn't charge us more because we're leaving. Let's hope not. I I just wonder, does it make sense to make this decision after they had their look back audit?
It would more than likely take the the five years, the that we look that we have uh in terms of our experience from the last five years. And then moving forward, so each year that um looking back five years will decrease uh to four years, to three years, to two. So eventually after five years, we will be out of um having to pay uh any uh any premiums or any uh any money uh back up after the five years is.
But they they do it every year, though, right?
They do it every year. So we will be seeing uh money or an invoice from them every year. It wouldn't be as much. Uh but it depends on the pool and what the five year, the previous five years look like.
Right. So I guess I'm asking, when do they usually do that in the calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh fiscal year. So every fiscal year.
The Councilor Harabedian, I I think the question you're asking is should we wait until after the look back?
Yeah, I'm not I'm not trying to game the system or anything, but I mean, I I just think that that could be significant, but.
We have to give a one-year notice uh to leave, so and we can withdraw that notice up until June thirtieth um of the end of the fiscal year when we're changing.
So this isn't gonna happen overnight. This is gonna this is gonna take a year. Okay.
Right. We'll we'll be with CJ P I A uh for the remainder of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Uh and assuming um council makes a decision to move to Parsac. If council wants to withdraw that up till eleven fifty-nine on June thirty, they can withdraw that.
Okay, well, this makes a lot more sense as to why J P I A hasn't come back with an offer we can't refuse yet. They have a year to try to keep us keep us in. Okay. That makes sense.
Councilmember Harabedian, I mean, that that's a good question you asked, but so let me ask another question related to that. The look back, is is that an adjustment on your base rate? Or is it just something baked into the the structure where everybody has to pay for part of the look back? So in other words, I'm I'm asking is our rates are based on kind of an average? Then if we have incurred too many things, our cost goes up and then they come back and charge us that increment over the average? Or is that how it works?
It'd be more. I always thought it was it was based on individual loss runs. That's what I always thought, but I guess not.
Yeah, if we have uh in the last uh three years, we've had two large claims. Those uh are within the the five next five years. So we would seeing an increase based on the large claims. Most of our claims are relatively low, and so we won't see as much, but it does become an average of the pool um at every fiscal year for the next five years.
Okay, so if if we were in a situation where we had zero claims over the past few years, then we would not get that extra charge?
Right, right, because we would not have incurred any claims uh within the last five years.
I see. Okay, so that that's that's good question that you asked, Councilmember Harabedian. Yeah, we're gonna probably have to pay for those claims to a degree over the next.
Right.
And that's gonna offset the savings.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, open it up for a public comment. Does anybody wish to comment?
Uh Mr. Mayor, at this point, there are no callers for public comment.
Okay, let's bring it back to council. Okay, well, I made my comments about the um or questions about, it just seems to me that we should be using a higher S I R, but that's what uh Parsac recommended. I still feel a little more, I would be comfortable going to a higher S I R, but what do you guys think? Or do we even want to do this, first of all?
Mayor, to and just to clarify that, uh you can change the S I R level uh prior to the close of a fiscal year. Um so if we join at at the staff recommended level or a council level that's changed tonight prior to the close of the fiscal year, for the following fiscal year, you could change your S I R down or up.
So we'd have to when July or June thirtieth to do that to do that?
Correct, Mayor.
Well, yeah, okay, so that's one month. I mean, we should basically, it seems to me, if we're gonna do this, we should decide today.
No, Mayor, I mean, I mean, every year that you're a member. So if you if you join at a level and then the following year you say, oh, that didn't work out or it worked out really well, then you can do it annually.
But we have until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one to decide, right?
For the initial.
Right.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we have a year.
Okay. So so just another question, though. So this be this will come back to us before we pull the trigger?
Uh Mayor, I think unless um you wanted to withdraw um or wanted to stop the withdrawal from CJ P I A uh for this to come back to council after tonight, a council member would have to agendize it and ask for it.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So I'll just comment uh my own, yeah. Uh you know, just looking at the cost savings alone, I I mean, I was pretty sold on that. Uh but I but I tend to side with the the recommendation um from Parsac as well as uh with staffing to be a lot more conservative and and I am a lot more risk averse um coming from the organization that I oversee and um just how uh uh unstable it can be and unpredictable. Um I I tend to like the conservative approach. I think it'll be helpful and and it's good to know that we can reevaluate every year, that we can um reconsider after a year. Um but I I actually like the recommendations that was put forward and I'd be uh I I feel confident going with this route that's proposed, but um obviously if it comes up again as another council member brings this up to agendize, we can reconsider. Um but I'm supportive of the move.
I'll 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 jump in. I I agree with that. I um I like, from what I hear, I like the idea of us being able to have more input in settlement decisions. Because I understand our current situation, sometimes we 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 really don't. And uh we're forced to settle when we really don't want to. So I I feel like that alone, everything else being equal is probably a good enough reason to do this, but I the cost savings uh to me are are too good to pass up, so I support it.
Yeah, I support it too. Uh I do think that there's some times that vividly stand out in my mind of claims that we did not want to settle and J P I A forced us to settle. And I remember at the time just not liking that. So I do think that the the freedom to do um a little bit more with our claim management is good and and I'm open to actually talking more about increased self-insurance, given, as the mayor said, given where where, you know, where our current general fund reserve is at. Um and I do think we have some time to think more about that. Uh I would just like to learn more about that and and see kind of historically if we did. Sounds like staff hasn't really run the scenario. I mean, I see it here on the on the chart, but I'd like to kind of get a sense of if we were to self-insure at a higher level, what what those numbers on an average would have looked like. But all that being said, that's not something we need to figure out tonight. Um I'm in favor of it. I do, I also like the fact that John Gilson, who I think is a really well-respected city manager, former city manager here, is the president. And um I think that to the extent that we do go over and and our city manager is involved with the leadership over there, I think that's also a benefit. So hopefully we can kind of push to get involved with the governance. But I think that's a that's an added comfort level for me that he's over there and Rancho Cucamonga is in there, so I'm in favor.
Okay, well, I'm in favor also and um, you know, I'm okay with going with the current S I Rs, but I I you know, maybe we'll take a look at it before we actually join. Uh just one more question about that. When they made when they made Parsac made the recommendation to go with twenty-five thousand each, did they take into consideration our reserves or was that something that wasn't part of their their um, you know, decision-making?
Uh, no, uh it it was not. They they based it on our experience uh for both live general liability and workers' comp. And the fact that we have uh we're a small agency with a public safety, police and fire. Uh they've they factored that in and a self-retention of twenty-five thousand uh is what what they would recommend based also on our uh on the way we manage our risk. And uh they felt that that would, you know, be on the conservative side. And uh but not to go any lower and but we can choose to go higher if uh if if we felt that that was necessary.
Yeah. So I I'm just gonna say one more time, I'm okay with this for starters, but again, when you make decisions about deductibles, I mean, part of it is your ability to pay if something goes wrong, you see? And this is where I'm just thinking that just because we have reserves, I I can't see how a couple of instances is gonna really do serious damage with a higher deductible level. I mean, it's to me, it's just worth a chance, but I'll go along with this and I appreciate you guys made the movement from twenty-five to fifty on the uh workers' comp. So thank you for that. And um so, okay, so I'm good with what we're proposed now, but maybe we'll think about it again before we uh, you know, withdraw from the J P I A.
So with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve as is with the recommended S I Rs of twenty-five thousand um and and fifty thousand of liability and workers' comp respectively for resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three.
I'll say it.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, if you can call for the vote.
Mayor John Caposha?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Erzmann.
Hi.
Councilmember Jean Gosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember John Harabedian?
Uh aye.
Motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty-three as presented was passed by unanimous vote, or do I need to say the twenty-five and fifty thousand? Or is that just assumed?
That was part of the.
Okay, then that's fine. So it was passed by unanimous vote. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last of our agenda items. Uh any thoughts of new agenda items? Okay, I'm gonna throw it out there. I'm not suggesting we do this. But um you know, the there's some people that are pretty outraged over some of the parking problems we've had because of the trails, things like that. Is, I mean, we talked about this before and I know, you know, part of the the biggest part of the reason from my memory, and I don't remember if this before uh Count Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Erzmann and Councilmember Goss was on to council, but Councilmember Harabedian, I do remember clearly when we brought this up to talk about creating a special parking zone on Miramonte. To me, the biggest reason we didn't do this is because it just pushes the problem elsewhere. And um, you know, that's my biggest fear, but uh, you know, we're just getting complaints. Is this just because of the reaction to COVID or is this something that's gonna be with us for a long time, that there's just gonna be a lot of uh impact on our trails and on the Shantry Flat Road? And Bailey Canyon, for that matter, is is this something we should take up again to talk about possibly creating uh a parking regulations around those areas?
I'm happy to second, yeah, I'm happy to second that for a future discussion.
Okay. How about you, uh Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Erzmann? What do you think?
I mean, it could have the discussion. I I feel like we've been, you know, over the years, we we all get the um the emails and the phone calls, and I think especially because of where I'm located in relation to the trailhead. But um, yeah, we can have a discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Goss, are you?
Of course.
Okay, I I'm okay with it. I I, you know, I don't want to prejudge uh. I I think the 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 difference here is is this a reaction to the pandemic that we have and it's gonna all settle back to normal, or is this something that is gonna be just a uh something that sticks in the craw of some of the residents up there that have been very vocal about this? So I think it's worth having the discussion. I'm not pushing that we make any changes, of course, until we go through it, but I I think in good faith, uh we should probably talk about it just simply because we're getting a lot of complaints about it. Okay, so that's an item for future discussion. Okay.
I'll I'll move to a adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
We're done. Bye, everybody. We're done. Bye, everybody.